As Sam has told me to say, would you guys like to introduce yourselves? Opening credits first, yes. It's like, wow, let's get going with the show. Now, if the candidates would like to introduce themselves, you each have one minute.
Kia ora, I'm coach Trish Given Tokoingoa. I'm running for Ponikius this coming election. And I'm running in the Eastern Ward. And I've been living in New Zealand for the last 15 years, 14 of those years, in Ha'atai. And I love my community and I want to serve my community as best as I possibly can. I've spent years working in volunteer groups and community groups right across the city. And I have worked in local government. And I've also worked with many social enterprises, charities across the Maukou as well. So I would love the opportunity to be able to serve and to be a part of this amazing city and really give back as much as I possibly can towards it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trish. And I would love to say that that helicopter flying above us has got even more candidates in it. But that is not the case. So I hand it over to you, Nick. Please introduce yourself, your opening minute.
Kia ora koutou, my name is Nick Royne. I am really proud to say that I'm standing for the Ward of Poniki, Ponikiness Central. I come to this as a very proud Wellingtonian and someone who has served in my community for a really long time, someone who wants to bring a really positive change to not only my ward, but also to the city, someone who brings an enormous amount of community experience and the voice of my community to the council table. And I just am really proud to be standing here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. And last but not least, Rob.
Kia ora and good afternoon. My name's Rob Gouldam. I've previously served as a councillor for four terms back in the very late 90s and certainly the first 10 years of the new century, I guess. And I'm very proud to be standing, to get elected as a city councillor in Poniki. Poniki, Port Nicholas, oh, I like Port Nicholas, very, very similar. I picked that up in the brief. Yeah, the city's in a, for me, the city's in a little bit of difficulty at the moment. It has some quite severe financial problems and appears to have lost its way a little bit. What do I bring to it? Experience of four terms. I've worked on a council before. I've worked on a successful council before. And I'm running again to do that job again. What do I currently do? Just a little bit of background? No, I've been cut out. I've been busted in.
Sorry about that, Rob. Hopefully we'll get more time to speak a little bit later.
I'm devastated, but.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, so now apparently I have to ask you guys if you want to get questions from boxes. Now, now, I have questions here which have letters and not numbers, so. Oh, wow. Okay. I'm the question host. Okay. Who's the question? I'm the show host. Thank you, guys. We're learning this as we go along. This is learning on the job. Okay, so we'll start with you, Trish. What number would you like to pick?
Alpha Bravo.
So question number A. Okay, right. Have I got the right question on the screen? Excellent.
All right, Trish. So the Ponikius Secondary School Students Association have been lobbying councillors on bringing in 24-hour bus services to Ponikius, particularly for students in wheelchairs who cannot get a wheelchair taxi between 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. What is your position on bringing in 24-hour services from the current service levels of 6:00 AM to midnight on weekdays to seven days a week?
Don't forget the microphone.
Yeah, keep forgetting. This is good practice. I've been, this is a good question actually, because I know that safety is a massive issue for a lot of students as well too. So being able to access buses a little bit more regularly, especially in the evenings when they socialise and stuff would be great. One of the things that they ran recently, and I can't remember off the top of my head, was like an on-call bus, which I thought was a really great idea. So it was available if you needed it. And, you know, just being able to transport people around the city safely, especially in dark evenings and stuff. And I know that's a massive issue for a lot of people. And as well for anybody who has a disability issue, just making those buses that they are accessible for everyone at all times. And shouldn't you just for students either, like for elderly people too, to prevent, you know, because sometimes loneliness and not being able to get out in the evenings is a massive barrier to getting out the door. So I would support it, yes, in some capacity. Obviously need to do like a casting on it and everything, but I do think it's a great idea.
Fantastic. All right, now we'll hand the question over to Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate the question. I certainly have been made aware of.
Oh, different question. Forgive me, ladies and gentlemen, we are learning on the job.
Okay, we are learning on the job.
We are learning on the job.
Okay, can I have question number 10?
Good try, Nick.
Indigo I. Question. What is your position on water meters? And do you think it's a revenue generation scheme or a recovery scheme?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think ultimately we are going to have to go in the direction of water meters. We're just, it's just going to become a necessity. The one thing I would say about water meters is that there is a really serious equity issue around water meters and the cost that's going to be faced by low-income households, particularly in this council ward, but also in the wider city. So that would be one thing that I would say that that would be a serious consideration that the council table is going to have to face. But we are going to have to place a cost on the water that our residents are going to have to, that they will be paying long term. So yeah, I would be in support, but I would also say that there will need to be equity considerations placed around the costs that ratepayers pay.
Excellent. Thank you, Nick. Rob, would you like to pick the next box?
13. That's, that's gotta be ugly.
Tango T.
T for Tango. Alrighty.
How much land as a percentage will you designate in the city as green belt land? And where do you feel this would best be suited to?
I'm just going by the what's currently allocated in terms of the town belt and reserve land that we've got at the moment, open space land. I think we've got plenty currently in the city. If there was an opportunity to add that or enhance that land, I'd always be helpful with that and the things that go with that in terms of looking after that land. Like, for example, the eastern area that I live, the predator-free stuff and what that's brought back. Yeah, I'm happy with where things are at at the moment, actually. I think it's great. There's plenty of great spaces for people to recreate in and enjoy. And yeah, I think we're well off for that as a city, to be honest.
All right, so from Rob, I guess we'll take it back to Trish.
Charlie C.
C for Charlie.
On Adelaide Boulevard, there has been a huge spike in cyclists using the cycleways. And turning in to and out of side streets is now more difficult for vehicles. Would you support putting in electronic cyclist warning signs similar to what is outside Caltech's Hut Boulevard?
This is a great question because I know that this has been an issue for a long while. And yes, I do support electronic cyclist warnings and especially where the data shows that there is a risk of this happening. Safety for all road users is, you know, it's vital regardless. And I think the onus is on everybody regarding their own safety and being seen. And I also believe that drivers have been more aware of cyclists, seeing as those numbers are incrementally growing over this period. It's just something that's the new normal, you know? So everybody just has to watch out for each other and be patient with each other as well too, I think is really important, you know? And just, we don't want to see any fatalities on our streets. That's the last thing we want. So yeah, I would fully, anything that keeps those accident rates low and safety high would be amazing. Thank you.
Excellent. And now we'll pass it over to Nick.
Thank you. I'll take number one.
He's going straight to the top. Good on you, Nick. Carrot.
A, question A.
With the recent announcement of the new ferries requiring Ponikius Port to have significant structural upgrades, this will now be funded by ratepayers instead of taxpayers. How will you propose to fund this cost? Are you going to borrow the funds or increase the rates to pay for this?
I'm going to use my deferral card for this one.
Two.
I'm going to defer to Rob.
Oh, thank you for that. Well, having worked for the Port Nicholas, the port company, which is a commercial company, that's their responsibility. There was some severe damage after the 2016 earthquake where 12 existing buildings that were there before were destroyed and it had to be demolished. I think that should be part of the commercial port operation and any developments that they do as a board, the entity that runs that, I think should be done through that. I don't see it as an issue that should be done or funded by the ratepayers, certainly. If the government identifies it as an absolute necessity in terms of the link between the two islands, I guess, Port Nicholas and, is that how you say it, without getting tongue-clowed, and the South Island, then perhaps they could put some money into it as well.
Thank you, Rob. So what do we do when? Oh, okay. Now you get to choose a box, Rob.
Thank you. I'll go for box number two.
Waco? W.
Yes, the one. All right. Will you support having council meetings within community venues in the suburbs from time to time in order to become more open and transparent?
Absolutely. I think one of the biggest mistakes the current council has made is the lack of ward meetings. I always thought when I was elected, some 27 years ago, yeah, 27 years ago, that part of your responsibility and accountability as a council is to front up at least once every quarter and talk to your residents and ratepayers and people who are concerned about council issues. I see that as an absolute must, so I'd like to see the reinstallation of those meetings, which currently with our current council do not take place. And people feel that they're disenfranchised.
You want to buzz in? Don't forget your microphone.
Microphone, sorry. Just around safety as well, like I think one of the reasons why, you know, we don't have as many people from council out and about in the communities as well too, is because of the safety aspect of things. And I think there has to be like a reciprocal kind of like agreements and well-managed and well-facilitated community meetings whenever we're doing these things, I think would be really vital. And I think building that trust amongst the community as well is really important, you know, because there's been a breakdown of that. And I think it's as a result of many things, you know, COVID distrust, lots of, lots of things that have impacted the world and our city over the last few years. So I welcome them to bring them back, like almost like Citizens Assembly type events as well. So funding is decided on a local level as well, especially when it impacts the community really highly. So yeah, it's good.
All right, now we'll hand it over to Trish. You get to choose a box. Excellent. Hotel. So we've got H. Let me find the H question. There we go, ladies and gentlemen.
There is a $4 congestion charge for driving a private vehicle into the Silver Mile. What is your position on congestion charging? And if elected, will you increase it, keep it as is, decrease it, or possibly remove it completely? And if lowered or removed, how do you plan to cover these losses?
This is a good question. I do think that it's a good idea to have it and keep it as it is. But then there has to be the knock-on effect to make it okay for our communities to accept it as well. And better parking in those other areas that surround the Silver Mile. And better public transport to get into the Silver Mile. And I think that that would, so I'm not answering this very well, very clearly. I would keep it. I just feel like the, you know, we were just talking about the Silver Mile a few minutes ago. And like one of the things to make it a more livable city that people walk around, almost that European feel. And even though we're not Europe, we still have beautiful days like today in the middle of winter as well. And that makes it all really, really enjoyable to be out there and about and bringing that people to our streets with a beautiful vibrancy.
Thank you very much. And now we'll pass it over to Nick. Pick a box.
Thank you. Can I pick number 20?
Unicorn.
U for unicorn. Well.
What is your policy on making a percentage of the roads a loading zone within the Silver Mile district that is long enough to fit two class, two-licensed sized trucks? Closer? Can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, we got that one. All right. I mean, I think having vehicles coming into the Golden Mile where the majority of our businesses are that can drop off product, I think is really important. So I think it is important that we do have vehicles, trucks that are coming in. I think the question is when they do come in. Because I think having trucks coming in all day, all parts of the day, I think that's when you start to have trouble with congestion. Because I think one of the clear directions is that we use the Golden Mile for public transport, active transport modes. So I think it's important that we do create space for our class-two trucks in order to come in. But the question really is, when do they come in? Do they come in in the early morning, the late evening, in order to do drop-offs of product? So for me, that's the question.
Thank you, Nick. And now we'll pass it over to Rob, so he can choose a box.
Number eight.
L for Lima. You can also say L for Laura. Yes.
On Greenaway Street, we have a big homelessness problem. What is your plan to house these homeless people?
That's a very good question. We've, it's a problem at the moment in the city. Council's current solution, or one of its solutions, is to lease a few buildings and turn that into low-cost housing. The very, a lot of the people that need, particularly the homeless ones that are very visible on our streets at the moment, have got other issues. And they, a lot of those are from the background they come from or alcohol and drug issues. And that's what a lot of the begging and I guess unsocial behaviour on the streets is all about. I've thought for a long time that we need some alternatives. I don't think the central city is. I don't think the central city is probably the best place to have large groups of those, they have people that are in that position. I think the social housing should be spread out. I've got social housing even in the street I live in, it works well. The other thing we need is a wet hostel where the people that need some of those services for mental health.
Rob, I will have to pass it on to Trish. You love pushing it to the limit and I love that about you, my man. Trish.
I've got plenty more to say.
I'm sure you do. Trish, please pick a box.
Joker.
Joker, that's what I am.
I frequently drive along Greenaway Street and I'm constantly annoyed that I cannot drive my single occupancy car in the bus lane. Will you either allow cars to drive in the bus lane or give me a personal exemption?
Sorry, I won't be giving you a personal exemption. I think that car, single occupancy cars driving in the bus lane defeats the purpose of what we're trying to achieve by having a bus lane in the first place. So the buses can move faster along those, especially at peak hours. And yeah. I think, you know, encouraging people onto public transport is really important, especially, I know, I know public transport and active transport isn't for everybody as well. But if you are able to, you know, come into the city, just looking at those other options, having a reliable bus service as well that shows up and that there is space to get on, because I think there's, it's a two way thing here as well too, and working closely with the regional council around providing more bus services, if that's an issue, why you have to bring your, your car into the city for whatever reason. And really consider when you do do these things, you know, and the time that it may take you. So, no, I won't be supporting that.
All right. I'll hand it over now to Nick. Please pick, pick a box, sir.
Thank you. I'll pick number 12.
Bravo.
B. Sorry, what was that?
Bravo.
Bravo. For me, really?
Encore even. All right. The Smiling Bay Residents Association have started a campaign to remove all 10 inline bus stops from Smiling Parade and replacing them with 15 metre offset bus stops that do not allow people in wheelchairs to board and disembark from public transport. Will you stand up to this vocal group, making sure all of Smiling Bay's bus stops are accessible to all public transport users? Or will you cave into Smiling Bay Residents Association campaign and prevent wheelchair users from reaching essential services in Smiling Bay?
Thanks for the question. I think it's really important to acknowledge the role that inline bus stops play. And I think it's also really important to acknowledge that it's not just our wheelchair users that take advantage of inline bus stops. It's members of our elderly community. It's our, our parents with, with wheelchairs and prams, sorry, our parents with prams that, that also take advantage of inline bus stops. So, I mean, this, this type of suggestion i- is actually going to take us backwards in terms of our public transport infrastructure. So this is something that, that I can't possibly support. I, I fully support creating accessible public transport infrastructure to support our, our public transport. So, so I can't possibly support this.
Just on time. All right. Now I'll pass it over to Rob. Please pick a box, sir.
Number seven.
Delta.
D.
What is your position on having new petrol stations being built in our community?
I think any new ones. In fact, if anything, there's been quite a decrease in the number of petrol stations, certainly in Wellington. I think, I think what we need to be doing is building a different sort of station. And that's ones where vehicles can power up, if you like, with the, with the green energy that we're starting to produce now with wind farms and everything like that. So, I, I think there'll always be some sort of petrol stations, certainly for the rest of my life and for the foreseeable future. But I think you're going to see a decrease, if anything, rather than, rather than an increase, which you're already seeing. So I, I hope that trend continues.
Excellent. Just in time, Rob. And now I'll hand it over to Trish.
Oh, but I had more to say.
You had more to say?
That's a notice check.
Yeah, I let my leg there.
Paris.
P for Paris.
For Panama.
For Panama.
Yeah. All right. What heating sources will allow the council to consent when building new dwellings?
Absolutely, 100% renewables and environmental friendly heating sources such as heat pumps, which can be very economical and low cost for a lot of lower income families. Well insulated buildings as well too. I feel, you know, there's, there's, and glazing, double glazing in buildings as well. So building standards really need to up their game as well too, as far as keeping that heat down to keep our families safe and warm especially, and reduce illness as well over these times and looking at ways to support families, even if they want to reheat or redo their heating systems and getting rid of solid fuel heating sources, which at the end of the day defeats, you know, causes issues around pollution in the air and also it's not a viable source of heat production as well for families.
Thank you so much for that answer. And now we'll hand it over to Nick.
Thank you. I choose number five.
Xerxes. X.
X. The xylophone.
Or X-ray would have been obvious, but. Would you be prepared to accept cash payments bribes in order to sway your council vote one way or another that could be in favour or against your community's best interest?
I, I think this one kind of answers itself really. That would be a fairly, a, a, a solid no. So yeah, that's all I have to say on that one.
I think that's probably the easiest question yet. All right. Rob, I'll hand it over to you now. Pick a box, sir.
Number five. Thank you. Have we had that? Oh, number three then. We'll go for number three.
Zebra.
Zebra.
Z. The intersection of Perth Rise Road and Nio Gully Road has been an accident hotspot for years with nine year misses a day and two crashes with severe injuries in the last 12 months. The council has been looking at options such as traffic lights, speed humps, cushions, four way stop signs and electronic warning signs, but have ruled out a roundabout because it would not be able to accommodate buses making a 45 degree turn in and out of Perth Rise Road. What option would you support when that decision comes to the council table?
I'd support the issue, the, um, um, a roundabout. Council currently builds those. There's one in High Tai Tai, for example. It's a complete bunkum to say that the buses can't turn on those. They design ones that are pre-stressed these days, as they did one of the projects I did before I even became a councillor, was to get the Strathmore Roundabout built. I think they're great. They regulate the traffic and the buses can certainly go over the top of them. So that's an option that should be on the table.
Wow, that was a lot quicker of an answer than I thought you would give, Rob. Well done.
They can do easily turn, they go straight over the top of them. They're pre-stressed. They can go left as well. Buses can go left and right. Unbelievable. It's unbelievable, isn't it, Sam? They can go left and right.
That's amazing. I didn't know that about buses.
As long as you put your indicators on and slow down.
Oh, you learn something new every day. Um, now Trish, I'll hand it over to you. Which box would you like?
Can I get number 14?
Sierra.
Yes.
S. What is your policy on medium and high density housing being built in Port Nicholas Central Ward?
I support this as well. I figure we need denser housing in areas that have, especially those public transport routes as well. But I do believe that you shouldn't sacrifice heritage just for high density. I think there is a little bit of give and take that could happen there as well too. We don't want to destroy our city and like completely wipe out everything that, that tells our history as well. And that's really important, those storytelling things and, and seeing these streets or houses on our streets. But I do believe that we do need more housing as well, but it has to be done in the right way and it has to be done with the well thought out design that suits the area as well. It's really important. And I also feel that cost, like, you know, that's one of the things that's been one of the bugbears for the last little while is that getting density doesn't mean that it's going to be affordable. But density can make, make it affordable too. And there just has to be ways of looking at that a little bit deeper and further and not just wipe it out straight away or just cross it off the list of things that we can, we can do.
Oh, you got it just in time. Now I'll hand it over to Nick.
Thank you. I choose number 18.
Kilo.
Kilo? How dare you, sir?
At Amanda Street Primary School, we have a bus route that goes right outside the school, but the bus stop is further away, being 500 metres along Barlow Street. Could you please put a bus stop nearer to the school?
Yeah, this is an interesting question. I mean, I think, yeah, we should be having our bus stops closest, closer to our primary schools. Because we get into situations where our kids are having to walk long distances to the schools and potentially crossing roads. So this would be something that I would be supportive of, moving bus stops closer to our schools. However, as a, as an elected representative, this is not really a discussion that, that you should be getting into about specifically where, where specific bus stops are. Because this is really a, a decision that should be made by people that are more, that have, that have a better insight on where, on where bus stops should be, should be placed. But, but generally speaking, I, I am supportive of our bus stops being closer to, to our schools.
Thank you very much, Nick. And now I'll pass it over to Rob. Please pick a box, sir.
Seventeen.
Quebec.
Quebec.
Quota, Q. What's your plan on making sure we as a city spend rate payers money wisely and stop the wasteful spending?
Currently, I think there's got to be an end to some of the glamour projects, to be honest. The, if we're talking about our city, that's currently $1.8 billion in debt and that equates to, if you just look at the actual number of rate payers, it equates to about $26,000 of debt per rate payer. The council needs to take a long, hard look at itself and work out what it can afford. There's a wish list, of course. What we'd like to do is very different from what we can actually do as matched to what our priorities should be. And one of those is the water pipes. And for me, infrastructure is the most important thing for not only the water pipes, but public transport, which we've just been talking about. That's the priorities council should be in for me.
Thank you, Rob. And now we'll pass it back over to Trish.
I will have number 16, please.
Echo.
E.
What is your position on having more council owned EV charging stations in our community?
I think this would be great to have lots more EV charging stations, given the way that the trajectory that our transport choices is going. And like Rob said earlier, it's not necessarily having more petrol stations around. Having more EV charging stations in locations around our community that's accessible to everybody is a no brainer. It's like, it's part and parcel of what our future and climate action looks like. Thank you.
All right. Now I hand it over to Nick.
Thank you. I choose number 21.
I think you've got 21 there, although you might have 22.
Romeo.
Ah, for Romeo.
Venus. What is your policy on heritage housing in Port Nicholas Central Ward?
Yeah, this is a really interesting question because it relates to what, what, what we think about housing density. There's a direct correlation between these two. For me, I'm, I'm a really strong advocate around getting more housing into, into our, our ward and ultimately into our city. And I think we're going to have to get to a point where we're going to have to start making some really tough decisions about what, what the amount of housing that we want to have in our city. And, and there are some places within not only our ward, but also in our city where, where we're going to have to make some really tough choices about whether we want more housing or whether we want the, the city to look the same. So for me, I would err on the side of, of having more housing and creating more opportunity for people to live in, in housing that, that, that is affordable to them and that is warm, safe, dry and accessible. And that's, that's where I would fall on, on this issue.
Thank you, Nick. And now I hand it over to Rob. Please pick a box, sir.
Number four, please.
Yankee.
Yankee.
Yankee. Where do you stand on turning off streetlights overnight in order to save rate payers' funds on electrical costs?
I think, I'm not sure of the results of, that's already been tried in some places and I think it makes good sense, to be honest. It's a cost and we've got to be looking at costs all the time. I don't think maybe after midnight or between midnight and about four in the morning, we perhaps need all the streetlights. It's just not justified, the ones that we've got. And it's the same even with things like the hospital. Their annual power bill 10 years ago is 20 million a year. And a lot of those lights don't need to be on at night time.
Nick wants to use his button card.
Or do we do it a different way? Do we put a lot of them on metres and, and with using, what's the power that I want? No, the, no, just even with bus stop lights and things like that, where we can use. On demand sensors, but they're driven like off the power system. We, we've got, you know, those racks like on the top of solar, solar energy. Yeah, we need to look at a lot, a lot of alternatives. So that's, I think, something that the So that's, I think, something that the councils can look at to light, you know, public infrastructure and that all the time. Perhaps on a lot lower power source as well. So it's not burning all that high energy that we spend so much money and our resources are generating in the first place. So, yeah, I think there's certainly hours at night time when that can be reduced quite successfully.
All right, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I mean, I take quite a, quite a strong stance on this one and, and particularly from a, I take a safety lens on this one. I've heard comments from our, and it's, we are quite close to the hospital here. I've heard ED nurses saying that they feel really unsafe going either to the hospital at really early hours in the morning or coming from the ED part of the hospital. And, and, and the one thing that they say, the one thing that could make a real difference is having streetlights on either when they're coming to the hospital or when, when they are leaving the, the ED part of the hospital, going back to their, to their home in the very early hours of the morning when they're coming off shift or going on shift. So I think it's the very least that we can do as a city is to make them feel safe, considering the contribution that they're making, not only to our city, but also to, to our country. So for me, it's, it's, it's not even a question that we need to consider. We just need to put the lights on and keep our nurses safe.
Alrighty, now, Trish, thank you. Button buttons, who's got the buttons?
We interrupt this broadcast.
Yes.
To bring you a commercial break, we've got a minor technical glitch.
And fixed.
And it's been fixed, so we're back on here.
Now that's the skill. All right, golf. G for golf.
With an increasing aging population, what sorts of requirements will you be imposing on disabled car parks as a percentage of total car parks, both on public and private parking land for public use?
Oh, well, when we're doing our street planning, I think we need to increase the number of disabled parks that are there. In my own community, like one of the things that I find fascinating is that there's only one disabled car park in the, in the village and and like nobody, and people say, well, nobody uses it. And I'm like, well, because it's in such an inaccessible area. And I feel that whenever it's not visible and it's not exactly where it needs to be, so you're closer to amenities. It's, what's the point in putting it there? So I, I increase them absolutely. And it should be with every developer or everybody that's doing anything, that the public are going to be using at all times. Like disability and accessibility issues needs to be at the forefront of everything that's decided. And especially for like, I've been working really closely with an elderly people in my, a person in my community. And I see how her, her mobility has changed so much, even in the past six months. So it prevents loneliness, it prevents lots of things, it keeps you involved in your community. Just put it in, it's not, it's not rocket science, you know?
Thank you very much for that answer. Now I'll pass it over to Nick.
Thank you. I choose number twenty-seven.
Foxtrot.
Foxtrot? That is an F.
That is. If you are elected, will you finish your term as mayor, councillor? Or could we expect to see a by-election if you are also elected as an MP?
I think there's a bit of history behind this question. But yeah, absolutely. I mean, if elected, I will absolutely finish a term that, that I'm elected into and there will be no by-elections. So I commit to that.
Alrighty, now I'll pass it over to Rob. Pick a box, sir.
Fifteen. Thank you.
Mushroom?
Mushroom? I like those, especially the magic variety.
Ooh, magic.
All mushrooms are magical.
A number of cemeteries across the city are approaching capacity. Will you allow our citizens the option of burial once the cemetery is full? And what are your plans for Awafah Fenua Cemetery once it is full?
I'm going to use my defier card. I don't like talking about dead people.
For once, Rob has lost for words.
Exactly. I think Trish should answer this, actually.
Thank you. I read this question.
Was that a sarcastic thinking or?
No, no, no. Actually, this is like one of those questions I, I actually kind of wanted.
Oh, excellent, okay.
It sounds bizarre, but you know, um, I think it's something that there is, everyone deserves dignity and death. You know? And I do support other burial issues or options, including natural burials and, well, planning ahead to look at the shortages that are coming up. And I think Manifeno must always, must absolutely be in part of this as well, too. Um, the long-term planning of where our burials should happen, to use the land where we can. And there's also a lot of very deep cultural considerations around this as well that need to be taken into consideration. And I think it's a big discussion that needs to happen with the wider community, both religious and non-religious, as to what, what this looks like. It doesn't exactly answer your question, but I feel like that's a wider conversation that needs to be had. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. I'll hand it over to you again because you get to choose the next box.
Twenty-eight, please.
Sorry, side game of Jenga. Ostrich.
Oh, for ostrich.
We have a recycling scheme in our suburb, but often the truck doesn't turn up. I know that problem. What is your plan to make sure our recycling is actually picked up?
Did you ask this question?
I did, but I didn't.
You didn't put it in the box, did you? Okay, all right.
Um, what is your plan to make sure recycling is actually picked up? Well, I think we need to just go back to contractors and make sure that they're fulfilling what they're actually set out to do on their rounds each week. And if there is an issue as to why this is a problem, maybe it's an access area because we know what some of the streets in Wellington are like. And if there's new people who are doing the rounds, who maybe are afraid of going up that street and being able to turn around and damaging cars. And there's lots of issues that you read about them all the time, like, you know, whenever been trucks have scratched the side of a car. So maybe there is a fear there from the workers themselves, but also checking in with the contractors and even discussing it on a street level, what does that look like? Doing each oil potter recycling at the end of the street and support each other to bring that to one collection point, so it makes it easier for the contractors out there doing this. I don't envy people who have to drive big trucks around this city. And I think having really good, robust discussions with the people that are providing those services to our city and that they're fully, well, fulfilling what they're, what they're, they're supposed to do.
Thank you so much, Trish. I'm going to hand it over to Nick. Guys, there's only three more questions left. You guys are doing really well.
Thank you. I choose number twenty-six.
AA.
AA?
AA.
Wow, okay.
At 3pm outside Ponekulus High School, the uncontrolled pedestrian crossing becomes a huge bottleneck with pedestrians non-stop crossing, leaving delays of up to 30 minutes. What is your plan to ensure road users are not excessively delayed for what is usually a less than five-minute trip outside the closing of secondary school hours?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I think better, better public transport could be an option for this one. Enabling our young, our young kids, our young high school kids to get public transport options to get from their school back to their home. So just to get some of the cars off the street, to stop some of those bottlenecking, to stop some of the cars coming to pick the, the young kids up. So maybe better, better public transport options could, could enable some of those cars to get off the road, to stop some of the, the blocking of the, of the roads there. So potentially getting some public transport options to enable the schools to, to get the kids back to, back to their homes after school.
Thank you very much, Nick. And now I'll pass it over to Rob.
Twenty-one, please.
Alpha.
Alpha?
Nope. Victor.
Victor?
I, the alpha is the victor. I'm sorry, I do not know how that happened. V for victor.
Hey, we all have moments like that.
Reassuring. With rates, bills becoming more expensive, what alternate, alternative revenue options are you planning on enacting in order to maintain the current level of services?
That's a very good question. Poor Nicholas is in a bit of a difficult situation at the moment where we've had Covid, government cuts and very, and a financial crisis, I guess. The other thing is it's not a manufacturing town. Therefore, it's, it's a political town. It's unusual with the fact that it's got central government in many of its buildings. It's got a regional council and of course, the city council. So it's unusual, the fact that it's different from anywhere else in New Zealand. I think what we need to do here is look at the things we're doing and the type of city that we've got and the vision that you have for how we see our city in 25, 50 or even 70 years long after, time long after I've left this planet. And what we do, how to encourage business here, what else we're going to do. Things like developing the film industry, maybe making Wellington an IT hub.
Now I just have to pass, I know, I know Rob has a lot to say on this issue.
And, and making Wellington, sorry, poor Nicholas, the, the arts capital and culture entertainment.
I do have, I do have to pass it on now to Trish. I'm sorry, Rob. Okay, well, for ethical reasons, I have to allow you guys to have a break. How do you feel about that?
Well, I'm very concerned about that guy that was going to take the bribes. What was it? I was going to read as, I have a card here with the Miranda rights. I was going to actually read them to him. You're not obliged to say anything, Nick, unless you wish to do so. But anything you do say will be used in evidence against you.
Excellent, okay. So we've got a 10-minute break. Please enjoy your break. What is your position on the Silver Mile upgrade that would remove private motor vehicles from the Silver Mile and making it pedestrian bus delivery of goods or services and active mode transport only?
Hi, Mike. I fully support the Silver Mile. Creating safe places for people first, streets that boost local businesses, improves air quality and creates vibrant public spaces. And delivery and accessibility must be taken into consideration and how this is actually going to impact the businesses that are there currently. But I do believe that the end result will be something amazing and it'll be a destination, location for many, many of the people of our city and make them want to come into the inner city more.
Fantastic. Um, now I'll hand it over to Nick, the same question to you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah. My position is that I do support the upgrade of the Golden Mile, getting our, our cars, um, out of the Golden Mile, getting public transport, active transport into the Golden Mile. My one, um, difference around this is, is that I do support, um, getting, uh, other forms of transport that, that enable people who, who aren't able to use our public transport systems, um, into the Golden Mile because people have a right to come into our city. And, and if people aren't able to use our public transport, then they do have a right still to come in. And, and that means through, through the use of taxis and, and also through the use of private motor vehicles with pub, with total mobility. So that for me is an absolute necessity and I think we have to guarantee that everyone has the right to come into our city.
Thank you for your answer, Nick. And finally, Rob, the same question to you, sir.
Uh, I'm opposed to the project. Um, um, and that's been my public stance so far. We're in a difficult position financially as a city with $1.8 billion debt, uh, dollars in debt. Um, there was an $800 million hole in the budget this year. Council tried to sell the airport shares to sort of bridge that and the very next day with that financial, um, uh, situation decided that they would spend $150 million on the Silver Mile, as we call it, but which stretches from Courtney Place to the bottom of Lampton Key. I don't see, uh, I think this is a vanity project. There are ample public transport for people with disabilities, et cetera, um, um, to, access that area. I, I don't see a need to reduce the number of bus stops. Uh, I, I think this is counterproductive to, uh, how we want the Golden Mile to be. Quite frankly, there are many reasons I oppose it and, um, and not just the financial reasons, but also the three years of disruption that they're talking about.
Thank you very much, Rob. Um, very different answer from the first two. Now I'll ask the second hard hitting question. The Fairmont Street, Street Business and Restaurant Association went on a junket to Las Vegas and enjoyed their covered version of Fairmont Street in Las Vegas. The association now wants poor Nicholas council to make our Fairmont Street the covered Fairmont Street of the South and would like the $100 million project put into the long-term plan. As an elected member of the council, would you be in support of this project or oppose it and why? Trish?
So. Poor Nicholas is not Las Vegas either. And I would oppose this. Adding $100 million to the, um, long-term plan, I don't think that's, I think that's reckless. And without a robust business plan, um, I would have to oppose it absolutely. And I said, inspiration is great to go and get. And I said, but we need to fund the essentials first. And I also believe that, I think this would, this would definitely be a massive vanity project that wouldn't benefit the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your answer. And same to you, Nick, please.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I would be skeptical of this. I would need to see, you know, a very serious business case that sits behind the, the requirement for that level of investment. But, but I would be very skeptical of this.
Thank you, Nick. And finally to you, sir, Rob.
Have I run out of deferred cards that?
This is a hard hitting question, sir.
Do I agree with, no, I think it's a vanity project, um, one we can't afford at the moment.
Excellent. Okay. Now for the, I believe it's the last hard hitting question.
As for those counts, those, for those people that went to Las Vegas, um, uh, I think we should tax all the winnings that they, um, they made in, uh, Las Vegas. And, um, again, maybe they should be read their Miranda rights.
Okay. I think I might be in agreement with you there, Rob. Okay. Now we'll go on to the third hard hitting question. Poor Nicholas has a crime problem with the failed policy of imprisoned mayor Lowen Boobert giving all rape pairs guns instead of having more cops on the beat. What is your plan to help bring down the crime problem and make poor Nicholas safe again? Trish?
Well, let's not have guns in the game for the first, because that just ain't going to fix anything really, is it? Um, it just being serious though, you know, as far as safety is concerned, you know, and there's been a lot of things that have happened in our communities recently that have been scaring a lot of people. We've had a couple of, um, murders in our area, which has been very, very, very sad for the families involved and for the community as well. But I do believe that there are ways around this and funding, better funding from city council around safety issues in our suburbs and not just the city centre is the way forward with this one as well. Getting, you know, empowering groups like neighbourhood support would be great and, you know, not encouraging twitching curtains, but you know, just being able to bring communities together. So we're looking out for each other a little bit more on our streets and everything as well too would be awesome. Um, community placing, just encouraging that and working really closely together with community groups as well. I believe that there's a lot of engagement that could truly happen around this in our cities. And I would be there to fully support any funding that would be put into projects like that. And, um, yeah, just, just making our streets safer at the end of the day, I think is really, really more important than anything. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer, Trish. Now same to you, Nick.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I think if, if people in our city feel unsafe to walk around our streets during the day and the night, I think we have a serious problem. And I think that's something that, that, that as a council, we need to turn our attention to. And, and I think we've already mentioned previously around the street lights. That's something that's a basic thing that we can, we can sort out. Um, but, but I think also investing into community safety teams to, to enable, uh, people to feel much more safer on the streets, partnerships with Maori wardens to, to enable that to, to spread out into the wider city. It is something that, that we can, we can also do quite easily. Partnerships with community groups as well to, to, to enable that to spread even further into the community, to build up trust within our communities. Are all things that, that we can do to, to make people feel safe, but also to actually be, be much more safer in our communities.
Thank you for your answer, Nick. And finally to you, Rob.
Yeah, I, I think it's got to be a, a bit of a, um, I'm glad Lauren's in prison anyway because she was a horrible mayor and it gives me the opportunity to, um, uh, bring about change in the city. It's, it's a horrible perception to have about, uh, the central part of your city, um, of having a crime problem. There are numerous ways to deal with it, lighting, um, good public transport, safe areas, uh, more police, as we've just seen on the beat, or certainly more active police officers on the beat, uh, and, uh, those wraparound services that we need for, um, many of the people that are actually on the streets, um, creating that perception that they're unsafe, um, um, being, having access to those. So that's really important. So, uh, and places to take people also, uh, when they decriminalize the offence of being found drunk in a public place, for example, uh, with the summary offences back nearly 40 years ago. Um, I think people need to be held accountable for their behaviour as well, but there have to be places, they never built these places, uh, detox centres and places like that for people who overstep the mark.
Well, you all answered that question better than I did when I was pretending to be a candidate. So well done. Um, and now.
That's because I'd make a bit of mayor than Lauren Boobert or whatever her name is.
And you would make a bit of mayor than me, that's for sure. And now for closing statements, um, Trish, your one minute closing statement, please.
Gosh, um. Thank you very much for having me along this afternoon.
You're very welcome.
To participate in this. It's been an absolutely great learning curve and I felt that you guys were really well prepared as well too for us. Um, I would like to, uh, just share something with you recently that I was at a talk last week and one of the things that one of the women said was that if you are not ready to serve, leadership is beneath you. And I feel that one of the things that makes a great leader in our city is the people who have worked amongst the people and in the communities that we, uh, deal with and speak to and work with every single day. And I would really love the opportunity to be your representative for Ponekilis, um, for the next three years. Um, and you know that I would put a hundred percent of myself and my energy and my enthusiasm. And I would bring some joy back into what has become quite a tiring and exhausting and, you know, just, it's all so down at the minute that we just need to bring back some joy and some enthusiasm to make hard decisions as well and to bring the people along with us as well as we make those decisions. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Trish. And Nick, for your closing one minute statement.
Thank you. It's clear that this, the, the ward of Ponekilis and the city has some serious challenges that, that we're facing at the moment. It, it's also clear from, from the people that I've been talking to that, that the, the people in this ward want to see change. They want to see strong leadership and they want to see candidates coming through who are going to bring through the voice of this ward into, into the, into the council table. They, they don't want to see people who are coming through who are going to be the same as it was in the past. They want to see fresh faces and they want to see strong agendas coming through. And, and if you vote for me, then you'll be getting a fresh face and a strong agenda coming through. So I ask you for my support and, and we'll, we'll go through and we'll, we'll, we'll deliver the change that you're asking for. So I ask you for my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And Rob, for your closing one minute statement.
Yes, it's good that that dastardly mayor remains in prison. Um, it's time for new leadership in the united council. I think the, the council's amply demonstrated that they're fractured and not capable of leading the city properly. Um, so time for, uh, new faces perhaps, and maybe some old faces that have been there before, because we need a combination of experience and, um, and, uh, people with the energy and the, um, uh, I guess the, uh, the drive to change the city, uh, to what we need. I think we need a new vision. Uh, we need, I think we need to look at our priorities. We need to sort the finances out. We need to make the people feel safer. And more, most importantly, we need to, uh, people to participate in democracy. They need to get out and vote, um, for the city that they want. And once we've got a new council, uh, to work with, uh, work with that council as a united team, delivering consulting properly, having ward meetings and all those things that, issues that we've talked about this afternoon. Um, so thank you to, it's in the ballot for inviting us here this afternoon. Uh, I'll look forward to serving you as your new mayor if I'm elected, along with, um, councillor Nick and councillor Trish, um, who look like they've got the right.